All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session. First order of business would be to see if any of the commissioners would like to discuss any of the preliminary items for the next BLCP.
I have none.
Okay, let's move on. First presentation will be from the Atlanta Community Improvement District. It's listed wrong on your agenda, so I apologize, Mr. McDowell, but Gerald McDowell will be making the presentation again, the Atlanta Community Improvement District.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
For the commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you this evening about some exciting projects. I provided you a booklet that gives you an overview of our vision for transit infrastructure in South Metro. And in this booklet, it talks about the three transit projects that we are advancing. Our personal rapid transit project that I've spoken to you about, and as well as our micro transit project. But this evening, I just, I want to talk about the autonomous shuttle project because this is one that's actually only located in Clayton County. The other two are going to be around the airport area and they'll be going throughout Fulton and Clayton County, but this particular problem, project is located specifically off of Phoenix Boulevard in Clayton County. And so I have invited BEEP, which is a company that provides several solutions in the autonomous shuttle space. We were able to take a delegation down to Orlando and visit their headquarters and see a live operation of the system. And we want to bring this project and this technology to Clayton County. So if you will allow me to invite BEEP, they are here this evening, and they have a presentation that they're going to walk you through, if we may walk through that presentation.
Yes, sir. Please bring them forward.
So Rob and his team, Rob Jenkins, if you look on page 10, and in the booklet, that's where the autonomous shuttle project is. But Rob Jenkins and his team from BEEP are going to present to you with an outcome I can close out when they're done.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Turner, thank you. Thank you, the rest of the board, for having us here. We appreciate it. I'm Rob Jenkins. I'm at BEEP, I'm an account executive with BEEP. And I want to do an introduction. This is Jennifer Foote. Jennifer Foote is our VP of Customer Success. And Mark Reed is one of the original founders of the BEEP company. So thanks for having us. Just a quick, one, thank you, just a real quick meet BEEP. We are a technological managed services company, and we provide controlled speed autonomous vehicles. And we have been doing this now for about two and a half years. Our whole goal is to bring safety and automation to transportation, and we think the Clayton County area is a great place to do that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen, let her kind of take you through some of the steps that we need to, we want to share with you. Thank you.
Chairman and commissioners, thank you for having us today. If you can advance the slides, please. Thank you. So I just wanted to give you a brief introduction to our company's timeline. We were founded back in February 2019, following a few months of ideation around the next wave in transportation technology. We launched our first route back in September 2019 in the metro Atlanta area in a community called Lake Nona. From there, we have demonstrated our capabilities at the Mayo Clinic in Jacksonville. We're actively engaged with the Jacksonville Transportation Authority in a test and learn program where they're learning about our technologies as well. A couple of things that I wanted to point out on the timeline for you that are very relevant to what the team here is trying to accomplish, and that's creating an expanded, connected mobility network. So you heard about the shuttles operating around the airport, but also here in Clayton County, there's an opportunity to create connectivity for first and last mile solutions, connecting folks who are coming in off of buses, commuters who are coming into the community from their various places of residence, to close that first and last mile gap. And so we've been running in Lake Nona, as I said, nearly two years now, very successfully creating that connected mobility network. In November of 2019, November, I'm sorry, 2020, to around February 2021, we were opening up our headquarters down in Orlando. That the chairman and a few of his colleagues had the opportunity to come visit. We have a remote command center there. So while we are based in Orlando, we do have the capability to service you guys with exceptional customer service even from there because we're able to connect into the vehicles and see them in operation at all times. And then, since we were founded in February, we've grown our company by four mechanics. So I believe I was number five on the ground, Mark was number one on the ground. Since then, we've grown to 80 employees, and we've transported over 50, or almost 50,000 passengers in the time that we've been operating these first and last mile solutions. Can you go forward, please? Thank you. So I wanted to give you guys a glimpse of where we, where our footprint is in the United States. We are primarily operational in Florida, and we did that on purpose. Florida is very friendly in terms of regulatory related to autonomous vehicles. And so we wanted to get started there and refine our service operations before we grew outside of the state of Florida. We do have an operation that we're launching at the Curiosity Lab in Peachtree Corners. And we have a couple of deployments out west in the state of Arizona, as well as in the state of Wyoming. We rep three primary players in the autonomous vehicle space very closely. Those are Local Motors, Easy Mile, and Robotic Research. Okay. So there are a couple of relevant use cases that I wanted to share with you as well. As I mentioned, the Move Nona use case there in Orlando is the one where we've really demonstrated the ability to bring folks into a smaller community and then create connectivity within that community using multiple shuttles to do so. But I also wanted to share with you the opportunity, a little bit different environment, a use case where we deployed in downtown Tampa. So we do have experience operating in dense urban populations where there's a lot of pedestrian activity and folks coming in from a regional commuting environment into bus stops and hubs where they jump off and then go to their places of employment or for other body services. Okay? So just a few of the benefits for this route, and I think Mr. McDowell has done a great job of identifying a great use case. The first one is transportation equity. I understand that a lot of the folks who come into the business park are commuting far from home, and, but there are opportunities for them to consume other services nearby their workplace if there's a way to get to them. So this solution is going to offer them that first and last mile solution so that when they get to their place of employment, they can hop on the shuttle, not have to walk that first and last mile distance, but also have access to childcare, medical care, and other businesses that are located in the office park. These shuttles are all electric, so there's environmental justice there. I'm an Atlanta resident. I know what the pollution is like, so getting gas-powered vehicles off the road is always a good thing, and then creating that opportunity for folks to take part in that in a multi-passenger vehicle as well is really important. Safety, we do understand that some of the folks who are commuting in do have to walk. There aren't sidewalks in the business community or in the business park, and so they're walking in the streets, and that's not safe. I believe I read a statistic that Metro Atlanta is number eight for pedestrian fatalities in the country. So anything we can do to introduce safety, we want to do that, so folks will have the opportunity then to jump on the shuttle as well. And then innovation, we would love to be part of the metro Atlanta area and Clayton County, putting their name on the map as far as a forward-thinking, innovative community. The route and demand analysis, we have, all three of us actually have ridden the route. We understand the requirement for the route. It's about a one and a half mile path that circles the perimeter of the business park there with Phoenix Parkway coming in the middle of that route. There are several destinations marked there with little green icons with the white shuttle that indicates where we believe it would be valuable for passengers to stop. Actually, Mr. McDowell created those stop stations. There are a few things to be aware of, simply getting some striping laid down on the roads, as well as looking at the speed limit on Phoenix Parkway to make sure that we're creating an environment conducive to autonomous travel. Very easy things that we can work on and get this up and running for you guys. Our command center, as I mentioned, is a remote operations center. We have the ability to see inside and outside the vehicles at all times using the integrated camera systems that are on the shuttle. So right now, we have operations running all over the country per the map. We have a remote staff down in Orlando, Florida, that's watching everything that's going on and has minute-by-minute connection with the attendants on the shuttles, the safety attendants in the event that they need to. This also lays the groundwork for remote command and control when those safety attendants come off of the shuttles. All of the capability is already there so that if there's not an attendant onboard, there's still access for passengers on the shuttle to reach into a real-life person. Okay? And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McDowell. That's my cue. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak to you tonight.
Thank you.
If you have any more questions, let us know when you start there.
Yeah, we'll open enough questions at the end, so please don't go too far.
Okay. So what we have, what we are looking at is to do a 24-month operation for this system. We are working very closely with MARTA because there are three MARTA stops in this Phoenix Boulevard area. And MARTA is interested in is how this can service their first and last mile issues. And what a perfect example we found in this business park by having those three stops and with the challenges that some of the people have in the area to be able to deploy this innovative solution for transit is a best test case scenario for our, for MARTA to look at, to see and determining if this is an operation that could expand in other areas in the metro area. And so we, we are working very diligently to bring this solution to our CID, and we found this business park to be an ideal location in Clayton County, and we want to put this on the map. What we are looking for, there's a $50,000 infrastructure requirement to get the park ready for the operation of this system. That's an expenditure that the CID is going to cover, but for the first, for the first year, so this is a two-year operation, for the year one and year two, this is where we're coming to you and looking for you as a partner to see if you could, would consider covering the cost that you see laid out here for year one. And we're planning to meet with the state. As a matter of fact, I have a meeting on Friday with the state, as well as meeting with MARTA to cover year two. If you added the numbers, the total cost there for this operation is $69,600 per month and with the attendant services. So based on current policy, it is still required that there is an attendant aboard these autonomous shuttles. And so that, so each shuttle would have to have an attendant onboard. And so for five days a week, eight hours a day, and three shuttles and operations, we're talking about $11,000 per month to pay for those attendants. And so those are job opportunities that we will make available to Clayton County residents to make sure that they have an opportunity for those jobs, to get the necessary training and to work with BEEP as an attendant. So the total cost, if you add the $69,000 and $11,000, is roughly about $80,000 per month, or about $967,000 per year. So for year one, the cost is about $967,000, and for year two is $967,000. And we would like for you to consider partnering with us in covering the expenditure for year one. And with that, we'll stop and see if you have any questions for us this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDowell and the BEEP team for the presentation. I guess I'll open it up and start off by asking a couple of questions. The first one is, I know there's opportunity for Clayton County citizens, but more importantly to us on this board, well, that's important, but there's opportunity to open up a local office in that park as well, correct?
So as you look through our booklet, our transit vision, one of the things that we're going to include in our proposal is the requirement that a local office is open by the vendor. A couple of BEEP employees actually live in the metro Atlanta area. So one of the things that we're going to put in our RFP for this vision is there to be what we're calling a center of excellence. That's what we're calling it today, and we'll get with our marketing people and come up with a name. But the objective is have an office in all the vendors, from the PRT operator, operator to the autonomous shuttle operator and the microtransit operator. We want them all housed in an office. And we're going to, we've talked, we've met with, had meetings with the mayor of each of our cities in the CID, that's Forest Park included, and we will provide them the specs for this office so that they all can compete to have this office located. And of course, Clayton County would have that opportunity as well. And so there you would have additional job creation opportunity, as well as a new asset and taxpayer located right here in the CID. So yes, there are other job opportunities that will come along with this vision.
Has there been any asks from MARTA?
Yes, we are, for each of these three projects, we have asked MARTA for support. For PRT, if you look at our PRT schedule, which is located on page, excuse me a second, if you look on page seven, the PRT feasibility study and the RFQ-RFP, those two steps, we are estimating and projecting that those two steps for the PRT project is going to cost $5 million each. And as MARTA included, $10 million in their FY '22 budget to cover those first two steps for our PRT project. For the microtransit project, that's a $1.57 million project, and it was selected as one of 17 projects by the ATL. And the ATL is advancing those 17 projects, that's the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority, excuse me, that is led by Chris Thomason, which our commissioner Frank here sits on the board, but they, out of their 200-plus projects, our microtransit project was one of 17 projects that is selected that is going to be presented to the General Assembly in their next session for full funding for those projects. So that project has the funding. Now for our autonomous shuttle, we're going to go back to MARTA, and we're talking to the state of Georgia on Friday and asking, making a request for them to cover the cost for this autonomous shuttle project. So yes, MARTA has contributed to the PRT project with $10 million. We're looking for the ATL, a contribution of $1.57 million for the microtransit project, and now we're looking for funding for the autonomous shuttle piece.
Well, last thing that I'm going to make is that they get to see this up close and personal, it was very impressive, and enjoyed the ride. It was nice and smooth, so, but this, they're doing a lot of work in this area where involving autonomous vehicles, and I'm very impressed with the system. So, other questions? Commissioner Hamer.
Maybe I missed it, but I'm trying to remember, how, how will the residents of Clayton County benefit from this?
Okay, so today, in the Phoenix Boulevard business park, for the three MARTA stops, if you're catching the MARTA bus or you're riding the MARTA bus, when you, to ride the bus, to get on and off, there's, you've got to walk a distance, as you can see in the route that was shown earlier, if you go around the business park, it's an hour and a half walk. So the way this is going to service the residents of Clayton County, for those who use MARTA service to that business park, is going to give them an initial service to help to aid them when they are using MARTA to get to those businesses and locate it there in this business park and not have to walk the distance. And as you know, as you can look at some of the businesses that are located there, you set, you have a number of people who are impaired, where either they're in a wheelchair or they're using a cane or some other difficulty walking. They'll be able to get on this shuttle that will take them to the front door of where they're going to. Now, the vision for this, and more specifically, this is going to be a 24-month operation where we'll be collecting data, and of course, MARTA will be working with us and sharing that data, and to look at, to see if this solution could work in other locations for MARTA throughout their entire system. So throughout Clayton County, there may be other areas where this would be something that could be used. And so there is, there are possibilities, future possibilities for expanding this operation to other areas. And each time, for each one of these shuttles, you have the command center operation out of Orlando, but you have an attendant onboard who, that creates a job. And then, for each shuttle, there may be multiple jobs created, but these are eight-hour shifts and a person is working five days a week. One may want to take vacation sometimes, you've got to have someone to take their place. And so there will be job opportunities there for citizens, but most importantly, this last mile, first mile challenge that MARTA has throughout their system, here's an, here's an opportunity for us to demonstrate a solution to address those challenges and see if that's just something that could be implemented in the future in other areas as well.
And just to add to that, I'm sorry, Commissioner, that, one of the areas that we were talking about is the Mountain View area, which could connect to the airport as well.
A direct connection.
Yes.
Okay, now, this Phoenix Boulevard area, has there been a study done to recognize how many residents we have that work in that area? And if so, how many may be impaired and all, I mean, you know?
Correct.
Because if they're riding the regular MARTA bus, they may not have an impairment.
So back in 2018, when we did our transit feasibility study, and when that transit feasibility study was concluded, there were several recommendations that came out of that study. Along with those recommendations, there is data available where it talks about current ridership and projected ridership. One of, one of the solutions that was recommended was to have a service like this in operation in the Phoenix Boulevard park. So that was part of our transit feasibility study that we did back in 2018, and so that's why now we are recommending these three projects, because these three projects came out of that study, and we have data to support each one of these projects. And there were two or three areas looked, that was looked at for the autonomous shuttle solution, and this Phoenix Boulevard, after the, we received proposals from other companies besides BEEP, but we, along with BEEP, we received multiple proposals. This is the route that showed where there would be the most benefit to the, those who patronize and work in this business park. So yes, there's a study that was done that recommended this project along with the other two.
We have a lot of empty buildings up there, on the Phoenix Boulevard, so I'm not sure how many companies are left.
That's, that's a great point. So we, we had a presentation at our CID board meeting back in June, and during that board meeting, one of the CID board members asked for this presentation because he had a prospect, and he wanted us to talk to this prospect, and Crystal Harris, our program director, was connected with this potential, with this development company because of that reason. They wanted to be able to show that here is a potential project that's coming to this business park, and they are using this project as a tool to show prospects what services will be available in this business park to address that issue. Even though COVID hit a lot of areas, that they are starting to see some increase in tenants in this particular business park, and having this 24-month service could act as an incentive for other prospects who are looking for, to locate around and near the airport, this is something that's going to set that business park apart from other competitors as an additional service that they can consider to take part and they use as. So that is definitely another incentive for having this service in that business park is to, is to address the, the number of businesses that are located and looking at this park for future use.
Okay. And I was also looking at the, what's expected of Clayton County as far as monetary contribution?
Yes.
And all, did you say how much MARTA was putting in for this? And would that deduct from whatever Clayton County is responsible for?
No, no, our ask this evening is for your consideration to cover the costs for year one, and then we will, we still need to have the conversation with MARTA and with the state of Georgia for covering year two. That's our approach to this. So for year one, our ask for you this evening is for you to consider covering that expenditure for year one, and then we would ask for MARTA to consider and the state to cover year two.
So that would take us out of year two?
Correct.
Are you asking, I noticed you mentioned something about the cities. Will they be asked?
No, not for this project, no. What we talked to the cities about is for this entire plan, is we're going to put in our request or proposal, when we put it out to the public, for the other system, that we, we want to open a center of excellence, and we would like to have the cities, along with the counties, to participate in locating that office, you know, in their jurisdiction. And so that's, I've had that conversation with the mayors of our cities. And so there are, there are several aspects to this transit vision, and the PRT, as I indicated earlier, the PRT, so that first project, MARTA has already committed $10 million to that project to get us through the first two phases. For the microtransit project, that's the third project, that's the one we're going to the Atlanta Transit Link Authority, and then the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority. And then for the microtransit, excuse me, for the autonomous shuttle, we're coming to you for year one, and then we're meeting with MARTA and the state for year two for this project.
Okay, and I think I may have missed this, and I think you mentioned this, Chairman, what is the connection between this transit and whatever's maybe provided for the Mountain View area?
Oh, okay, yes. So if you, if you look, look through the projects, you'll see that the route that we've created for the personal rapid transit system includes a station and a stop in Mountain View, which, which will allow this particular project to potentially expand to that stop in Mountain View. So there, there could be a connection between the Phoenix Boulevard Business Park and Mountain View because of the PRT project. And but the, but the Mountain View, excuse me, the PRT project is already including Mountain View. We're looking at expanding the autonomous shuttle project to that location as well, but that's for the future.
Yeah, I think this is the last question. What happens after the two years of 24 months?
We will, we will, during this, all throughout this time, we were working very closely with MARTA, so they have a project manager that's going to be assigned to the project, and that's so that they are evaluating the entire 24 months and to make the determination after year two, if they will take it over and continue it as part of, as part of their MARTA operations. So that, that's the possibility after year two.
And if they don't?
We will, we need to explore that when, as we, during, during the year two, if it's determined that this is not a solution that works, then it will be discontinued after year two. But if it's a solution that does work, and if MARTA should decide not to incorporate it as their system, then we, we would need to just explore other options of how we would continue this operation. So that is something that we have in the back burner, to know that as we have conversations with our congressional leaders, so we've sat down with Congresswoman Makima Williams, we've talked with her about all these projects, we've met with our two senators' transportation teams, Senator Warnock and Senator Ossoff, they have, they are familiar with these. team, Senator Warnock and Senator Ossoff, they have, they are familiar with these projects. And so we are looking for funding from other sources if there, if the need arise down the road for us to look to other sources to continue the system, to continue this operation if it's found to be successful. And the current, if the current plan is not adopted, that current plan being MARTA takes it over after year two, then we have other conversations that will explore what we would do in that case. So it's not going to be done in the back, I mean, your investment is going to be towards the long-term transit plan for Clayton County as you look to expand MARTA services throughout the county. This operation is going to provide data and feedback in terms of how that will be expanded in Clayton County in the years to come. One other thing about our vision, what this vision does is it takes project plans that we have been looking at for South Metro for decades, where there are 20-year and 30-year plans. And now with these three projects, this project, BEAT told us when we visited with them, this could be implemented in a 60, six to nine-month timeframe, that this could be operational. So not 20 years, not 30 years, six to nine months. Microtransit could be operational next year in '22, and then PRT will be operational in about five years. So this plan has taken the challenges and the need for transit options in South Metro from a 20-year and a 30-year projection to where we could have all these solutions operational anywhere from six months to five years. And so that's the vision that we are presenting to you tonight and that we are hoping that you would consider to be part of. And that vision includes expanding these services throughout Clayton County in the years to come. We have to have a small operation so we can collect data and determine if it's feasible, and then if so, how do we expand it for future operations? And so that's what we are tonight.
Questions?
Chairman Turner?
Yes.
Yes. Going along the same lines that Commissioner Hamburg just spoke about, for me, I love the concept, but for us to begin to invest financially in this, my question does become, what financial options do we have for year two and beyond if this is deemed a success and we want to move forward?
Right. So if you go to the back of, I think it's the back, we're not doing this by ourselves, we have an advisory committee that we put together and you are represented on that advisory committee.
Right, page nine.
So if you start on page nine, you can see who's on this advisory committee. So you can see that Delta Airlines, Georgia Tech, Hartfield-Jackson, the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority, Fulton County, Georgia Department of Transportation, Portia, MARTA, and we have, we've hired a consultant along with Clayton County that's represented by your chairman and then by your economic development officer. So we, throughout this entire 24 months, we are working with this advisory committee to help us explore and make those kind of decisions so that when we come to year, at the end of year two, we won't be scrambling for what we do next. That would have already been decided along the way because of all the players are, we are working, as you can see, we've brought, we've put together all the regional players necessary to help make those decisions. So MARTA, as you can see, MARTA is represented by their president and CEO. And so that's not, that's not a year-two decision, that's probably a decision that's going to be made in year one.
I understand, that's from the advisory impact, correct? But that's not from the financial impact, is that?
That's absolutely the financial.
That is, okay.
Yes, absolutely. This advisory committee, the reason you see this makeup is because that's part of the conversation, is how do we pay for these projects? And so those conversations are taking place with us all throughout the process. This is not a, when we get to the end of year two, let's sit down with some folks and figure out how do we continue this because we felt it was a success? No, that is something that's going to be, that's ingrained in the process. They have been working with us now for the past, going on a year. This advisory committee was put together about a year ago, so we are not going at this alone. As a matter of fact, with PRT, with MARTA's $10 million, that's their signal that they're taking over. And so that project has now migrated to MARTA. So the same thing we anticipate could potentially happen for this project where MARTA says, okay, we cover year two and we're taking it from here.
Okay.
Same thing with microtransit.
I understand that. So my question becomes, we just passed the 15th Amendment last year. Is there any way through MARTA that we can begin to use that half cent penny to begin the funding of this operation for year one instead of coming out of our budget?
It's not high capacity. It would be an issue.
The money that's being stored, that half penny that goes into our account is at our discretion.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Let me say this, if I may.
Go ahead.
We have to be very careful of discussing that here because it specifically is for high capacity. And if I may, one second, and I love your presentation, love the fact that you gave us a vision, but I need to, I need to make sure something is stated correctly on this board. The AT, and I'm taking this hat off as Commissioner, I actually chaired that meeting that day, and there were a lot of questions about return on investment for these projects. So when we took that vote in that meeting, it wasn't given a stamp of approval necessarily, unnecessarily, it was for a prioritization. We added those additional 17 projects to an existing prioritization list. So we need to be, I want this board, of which I am a member of, to understand what actually took place in that meeting. Also, there's no funding committed to it. The state has not committed any funding to any of those prioritized projects except for one or two projects that came through MARTA with ARP funds. So you stated correctly that we voted on it, but our board specifically stated on record that we're looking to have that ARC modeling come back to us so that we can see the return on investment on this project in particular and any other projects through the CID. But I wanted to state that fairly to the people I serve with here.
Thank you.
But go ahead.
But again, for me, I'd like to investigate the possibilities of that, if any. Then there might not be any, there might be. So I don't know that, and it sounds like it's not 100% clear as of this moment in time. So that's something that I would like to see done. I noticed also, all the mechanical issues for these are serviced remotely, correct, from Florida? If there is a genuine mechanical breakdown that cannot be fixed remotely, are these vehicles then shipped back to Florida or is, how does that take place?
I can take that one for you. So 99% of the issues with these vehicles can be solved remotely, it's like a rolling computer. If there is a mechanical breakdown, we will have a side meet, staff, a job opportunity for Clayton County, and that person will be trained. If there's a part required, we have a spare parts kit on site, and most of our issues, again, 99% can be solved within 24 hours. And if we have to have staff come in, they fly in on a next-day basis.
Okay. And what would be the turnaround time? Let's say one had to be taken out of service and another one put back in?
Except for that, about half percent, less than 24 hours.
Okay, okay. And my next one was, where is it? Let me forget. Because we do have that remotely, I think I've gone through, there was one more here. I'm sorry. As far as, oh my gosh, I'm forgetting that quick. Continue.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner.
Okay. We've already discussed the statement that was made. Again, this is a great vision, but what I'd like to see that I feel that is lacking, and of course, once again, it was stated on record by, by the other authority when it was presented on the prioritization list, is that there is no modeling included in it. You mentioned about your information from 2018, but right now, we're going back and we're remodeling that information, we're requesting from ARC to give us additional information because the atmosphere of 2018 is quite different. We're not going back to 2018. So to base something off of 2018 data is not necessarily the, what's going to give us the outcome that we need as we continue to plan for the future. The other thing is where this creates an opportunity, what I'm seeing is creates an opportunity for the company to come here and to build here. But it goes back to the question that my colleagues asked early, what is the direct benefit to Clayton County? Now, there is potential for growth and development, but of course, with the community development, economic development, that really needs to be explored. So what I've heard tonight is what it can do and how much it's going to cost. And I believe that in order for this board to make a true, I guess, not just a recommendation, but be able to analyze what the benefits are to the folks that we represent on this board, we really need to see the return on investment because we know clearly how much it's going to take. But what is the return on investment? Where's the ARC modeling for right now? As the Commissioner asked, what is the demand for this project right now and for the future as of today's date in the projected future going forward as opposed to asking us to make a decision now? The other point I want to bring up, as I also made some notes here, there was one other thing. The $10 million, not asking you to answer it, but let's go back to whether we can use the half penny. For me, I'm just going to let you know, the citizens voted for high-capacity transit. That's what the citizens voted for. They voted for MARTA to come back to provide a service to the community. Yes, we have our first mile, last mile issue, I agree with that. But also that half penny is for a high-capacity transit option. Now, what we have to ask ourselves is, does this meet that definition? That's not something we can do right now, we can't explore those options, but what bothers me is when we're going to explore those options here for the sake of using funds, does it supersede the will of the people of the community that voted for that funding to be used for a specific purpose? So while we're looking at that, we need to ask ourselves that question as well.
And may I make a comment regarding that? That's an excellent point regarding the high-capacity requirement. And so one of the, this vision addresses that, and what this vision is suggesting that these three, that's why we have the three solutions all together. With PRT, microtransit, and autonomous shuttle, what our consultant has shown us in the data that he has used in other communities, these three solutions will provide the same level of service as a high-capacity operation at a fraction of the cost. So when you look at high-speed rail, for example, the MARTA train, that is a $300 million per mile to build, to construct. When you look at light rail, that's $150 million per mile to build and to construct. When you look at bus rapid transit, that's somewhere between $30 to $50 million per mile. When you combine PRT, when you add PRT to the mix, the PRT solution, depending on how it's implemented, if it's implemented at grade on a road where it has a dedicated lane or is a suspended operation overhead, it ranges from $10 to $30 million per mile. When you couple PRT with autonomous shuttle and microtransit, it provides the same level of service that you would get out of a high-capacity solution. And so this is our opportunity to determine if we put these in operation and over this 24-month period, along with the microtransit solution and PRT, we might be able to discover that relative spending $300 million per mile, that we could spend a fraction of that and expand this, these three solutions throughout the entire county and throughout the entire South Metro. Now, the reason the CID is leading this, and you make a very good point, it is not appropriate for our transit agencies to explore that possibility. And so we, when we looked at this back in 2018, the question was asked, how can we explore other solutions to stop the challenges that we have in South Metro? And that's where the CID stepped in and said, we'll use our funds to do that exploring. The same trip that we took to Orlando, we took a delegation to London to look at the operation there back in 2018. And so since 2018 and 2019, and of course, 2020's a blip, here's where we are. We believe that we have found a solution to couple together that could meet that high-capacity demand, but that is unknown. And the only way we're going to know that is of course through the assistance with ARC with modeling, but are having a pilot operation or a temporary operation to explore that and then to make that determination. And while that is being done, the benefit of it is to put, to indicate to the marketplace that we are advanced, forward-thinking community and leaders, and we are exposing ourselves to these technologies that the global community are looking for these kinds of solutions. And we could be in the forefront of helping to make that determination in a very small window, five years is not a long time, to make a billion-dollar discovery about how to implement transit solutions going forward. And so that's why it was so important for, as the CID, as we led this, for us to not go at this alone and we put together this advisory committee and we continue to interact with our transit agencies. And along the way, we keep you abreast, and when we have our one-on-one conversations, that's the purpose of those conversations, to let you know that we're still working, we're still moving forward. Now, we're at a point where for all three projects, we're needing to ask for funding. PRT, that's a $450 million ask. Microtransit, I tell you, is what, 1.57. This one here is about, little under $2 million, $900,000 per year, so about 1.8, 1.9 million. And that's where we are now. We're now at a point where we've gotten involved to the point where we're looking for funding. MARTA has indicated, as it relates to PRT, for them to put in that kind of money, it's time for them to, for us to hand it off and to continue to be a partner, but for them to take the lead. We anticipate the same thing happening with autonomous shuttle and with microtransit as well. So very disappointed about the data from 2018 and the need for modeling, but the larger vision is to address that high-capacity demand where we're being told that unfortunately other communities are not collecting that half cent like you are, and that they are already spending it in existing operations. You have an advantage, and I tell this to people when I talk, there's no better potential anywhere in metro area, perhaps Georgia and Clayton County, and it's because of this advantage that you have, and I commend you for being very thoughtful about how you advance that funding to pay for operations here in Clayton County.
Have you applied, have you all considered your small starts as a source of funding?
We are exploring.
How far are you into it? You said it's been a year. This is now the time. How far are you into the time?
We just started having those conversations with the congressional staff and the federal staff, and one of the things that we wanted to try and do is have the conversations at the state level in the board and see if we could advance these projects without entertaining additional funding outside of, from the outside. But at the same time, I have a meeting in September where I'm actually meeting with US DOT and to have some conversations about future funding for these projects. So we're looking now in the role of, okay, how do we pay for this once it's operational? Or even how do we get funds from, to, how do you get funds to pay for construction even now? So we are exploring different sources of funding, some of those are in early stages and some other ones have been more mature.
All right. So the only other question I have for you is, what is the next step expectation for this board?
Well, the next step would be, I've heard some questions this evening to let me know that there are some other conversations that we need to complete and give you an update so that you can be more informed before you decide on if you want to partner or be part of this initiative. Those meetings will be taking place very quickly, they are all scheduled. The last meeting that I have is the first week of September with Congressman David Scott, but all the other meetings will happen before then. So perhaps we come back before you in your latter, in your last meeting, work session in September, and give you an update about those conversations. I drove here from Columbus today, there was a congressional luncheon in Columbus, and I went there today because there were a lot of folks who I knew we did have some FaceTime with, and we were able to have those, I got a pocket full of cars, but the objective was to be able, to be there and to elaborate about our vision before those folks and to ensure them that we are having the meetings. We are, just today, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with the Clayton County State delegation and the South Fulton delegation, so we're going to be having a meeting hopefully with that delegation, those delegations in the next 30 days. those delegations in the next thirty days, so we can make them aware, uh, because we, we are, uh, we're going to the state and we're asking the state for, you added on the other two zeros behind the numbers, but, um, a couple hundred-million dollars that we're, we're gonna be looking at from the state, uh, as well as Fulton County, Parson Jackson, and other folks, um, we're looking at to raise, uh, close to a half-billion dollars. And, uh, we've had some very productive conversations. So probably that second work session, if we may.
In September.
In September. Uh, do you have two in September?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know.
Second and fourth, Tuesday.
I didn't know if they canceled the first one.
No.
Um, but that second one, probably is good, is enough time for us to, if we can get back on the agenda, I can come back and we can, we can have, uh, give, provide you the update with these other meetings, 'cause they are happening this week, next week.
Yeah, so it's not a problem to have you added back onto the work session. In the interim though, I wish you, I hope you will reach out to each commissioner and get their specific, uh, concerns and, and issues and get those, uh, questions answered. So next time you come before us, then we'll.
We'll do it again, yes.
Absolutely.
I think when we talked to you before, it was more specifically about PRT, and, and we had not gotten it, because the micro-transit piece, uh, we were looking at differently, and then now with autonomous shuttle, um, absolutely. Look to, look to hear from me before that next work, work session.
With that being said, we appreciate your presentation. Thank you all for coming down, and, uh, God bless, and we'll see ya fourth Tuesday in September.
September, okay, very good. Thank you guys for the opportunity to just talk, talk to you this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next up is the presentation by Roman United and the Development Authority. Ms. Erica Rocker-Wills will lead off the discussion.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Tonight, it's a great night to be in Clayton County, um, as good things are happening right off Exit Two Thirty-Three. We just left a major event at South Lake Mall and some other good things to come. We'll be announcing at our next economic development update in September. Uh, but tonight, the chief project off of that Exit Two Thirty-Three is held jointly between Lake City and the city of Morrow. Um, I'm gonna introduce, or bring up Mr. Larry Vincent, Executive Director of the Development Authority, um, that owns Twenty-Six Acre Parcel that a lot of interest has been, uh, seen and gathered over the years. Um, he will then introduce the actual developer who will present their plans for this site, which is Fifty-Seven-Eleven Jonesboro Road. Just a little bit of background of how we got here. Many of you were involved in the culmination and creation of the RFP, which went out in June of twenty eighteen. You heard from three solicitors, three proposals rather, so did the Development Authority Board, and the presenter tonight is the developer of, of choice that came out of those two meetings. So, at this point, I'll bring up Mr. Vincent, who has the comments on behalf of the Development Authority, and we're certainly appreciative of their work and support and funding thus far. Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Vince. Uh, Chairman Turner and Commissioners, thank y'all for having us here again tonight to talk about this great project. Uh, as Ms. Rocker shared, this is a project that we worked very hard on for a year to bring to fruition, to actually get to the contract stage, and all the legal documentation is, um, is with, I believe, Mr. Reed, ready to be executed on. But tonight, we want to give y'all an update on where we're at. Uh, you saw a very simple presentation over a year ago. Tonight, I think you're gonna be really impressed with where we're going and what we wanna do. And without any further comments, I'd like just go on and bring up the design team, if you don't mind. Um. Joe and Doc and Roberto. Roberto Knight, uh, the first up is Doc Roman, uh, and Joe Burn, they are the local representatives of Roman United. They're on the call to us every, uh, twenty, weekly almost. And they've done a great job working with the county team and putting this project together. Of course, Roberto Knight is the president and, uh, of Roman United, and he's also part of Vista Partners. We also have a Zoom call going, and on the Zoom call, we got, um, Hassan Ballbrink, who's, um, over in the Middle East right now, he couldn't be here tonight, and we got Jack Montana, he's the president of Vista Partners, one of the investors. And what I'll do is turn it over to these five gentlemen and let them reflect what they wanna do with this project.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Commissioner and Chairman, I'm Doc Roman, uh, CEO, founder of Roman United. Very familiar place here as we, as we stand here again, and I, um, very proud to be a part of this project and a part of, uh, part of what we got going on with you guys in Clayton County. First, what we'll start with, we actually start with the video to show you guys, um, the aspects of Fifty-Seven-Eleven. Uh, we did a video that has, um, dynamic drone views. Uh, we're going fifteen stories up with the buildings, so you can guys kinda see exactly how it will look if you're sitting on a rooftop, um, restaurant lounge or on top of a hotel, um, there for this, um, mission's development. So if you guys can see in this video, um, we basically did a, a, a person, in-person view of how you will see, um, the view from this aspect, this project, um, fifteen stories up. If you're looking, if you look at the video, which I know you guys have, go back and look at it, um, you're able to see downtown, you're able to see midtown, um, there's even an airplane that looks like it's almost flying over downtown in the video. You get all the aspects, I think, of, um, of Clayton County, of Atlanta, surrounding areas that no one, um, in the states can view at this point right now. Um, so I think this project is very important to Clayton County. Um, of course, it's very important to us. Uh, we've been working, you know, as Larry said, two years on this project now to get to this point. Uh, we have a very dynamic and unique site plan here. Uh, as you can see, uh, you know, Roman United and, um, Akon City, uh, we're, we're a partner of them, we're doing a lot of projects around, um, the country, uh, one, uh, Senegal and the car. Um, so I will go into letting Hassan, the architect who's on the Zoom, talk about, um, the presentation and going through the site of everything, where we are right now as far as to help you. Hassan, you there?
Mr. Bakari. Yeah. Well, I'm sure y'all got a plan B to be able to, you know? Technology is gonna fail, so have a plan B, and let's have somebody else present his part, so we can keep.
Yeah, I can, I can present the part right now. No, it's here, it's here.
Please, let's proceed on.
So you see here, we're the, um, so we're, this is the Clayton County Entertainment Complex, so, um, pretty much the, the introduction, if you go to the next slide. So the introduction will be, um, the first, uh, site zoning, which we've done, um, um, already for the, for the zoning of the property. Uh, we're, we're gonna have Clayton County Development Office, uh, there will be office spaces, um, with retail and, um, parking, and then you have the, the other offices which will include, this will be class A office spaces with retail, uh, there will be mezzanine floor areas, um, fitness center, um, also with parking. And then going into the, the residential, uh, we will have residential units, um, with retail. We're looking at having a gym, um, there with a planned area of pool, and also, um, podium parking. Uh, and then we go into the hotel, um, and convention center, which will have, a hotel along with the convention center, there will be a new floor hotel with spa restaurants, um, there will be a mezzanine area, uh, for, along with parking. And if you need to think about all of these concepts, they will have rooftops, um, so they will have, uh, rooftop concepts, and what we're gonna include is layers. Uh, so it will be layers of views from the inside of the facility, and layers of views from the top of the facility. So if you're, if you're inside of a, a hotel, um, you're gonna be able to see and enjoy, I would say, people watch, um, see and enjoy the views of the actual entertainment, and then from top of the, the hotel, the rooftop restaurant, um, lounge area, you're gonna be able to see the views that we just showed you guys. Um, we also did a, a drone of the nighttime views, and you can see the city, which we'll get there to you guys too, but it's magnificent at nighttime also, um, if you go to the next slide. Uh, so here's a, here's a site location, which I, which I said we did all of the zoning, the site for, um, if you go to the next slide. Um, so right here, this is, this is a very important slide to me, because basically what this shows is the area where it's gonna be, and the potential that we have here for the facility. So the blue areas are marked out for the site location. Um, and then what we're, this is, this is gonna be a walkability space here, so the entertainment is gonna be inside of what we really want to, um, incorporate inside the project also. Uh, we're gonna have a trail that leads to the back of it, so in the back of the facility here, it's gonna be a trail. Um, so you can have your entertainment, and you can also have your, your, um, you know, your people who love to walk, um, skate, um, ride their bikes, um, in that aspect for the community right there inside of the facility. Um, this is kind of a, a layer of laying here. Um, if you go to the next slide, I'll kind of, I'll kind of show. So if you're looking at, if you're looking at, um, C1 right there, that is gonna be the Development Authority headquarters building, uh, class A office right there on, in the front, right on the road, on the main road on Fifty-Seven-Eleven, that's gonna be easy access there. Um, and, and, you know, that's you got a building, that's where we wanted to put it, so you gotta have easy access, uh, basically the front row to the particular, uh, facility Uh, this just explains it in more detail, and I won't go into a whole lot of details because this is, this is, it's a lot, um, going on with each individual building as far as square footage. Uh, but the main thing I wanna, um, elaborate on is the fifteen stories, so if you're looking at it, it's gonna be going fifteen stories up, um, on the properties, so the views are spectacular, um, and then there's gonna be a lot of, of, uh, living room for retail spaces, um, and then as far as the residential, uh, space is gonna have, you know, a lot more residential, um, opportunities there, uh, to go with this, uh, concept. Okay, so, so here's the, here's the dynamics of the project, we're looking at, um, everything is gonna be, um, sustainability, everything is gonna be, you know, clean, you know, green space on the outside. Uh, the look of it is definitely, is gonna give the feel of a spectacular building that no one has seen before. Uh, I think in, in, you know, our standpoint here especially since we're doing, you know, the development office, it's one of the first buildings we're gonna be building, uh, we're gonna, you know, bring the type of attraction to the, to the facility. These are the, these are offices, um, that will be included inside of the facility. Um, if you're looking at, if you're looking at the standpoint of class A, this is definitely a, a class A built-in feel, um, that we're going for. Um, and like I said, this design has been worked on for two years for it to get to this point, so, uh, this is, uh, the offices are the very important aspect of the project So next we have the residential, um, high-rise building, um, you're gonna have spectacular views of this also, um, this is, this is gonna be a residential district, which is gonna be a complete design. Uh, what, what we feel for this project is the design is gonna be airy, it's gonna be clean, um, it's gonna be green, and, and also it's gonna be luxury to bring that, that feel and look of what Clayton County needs for the facility. Once we have a hotel, the convention center, uh, I think this attraction is gonna be something that, that definitely everybody's gonna be able to gravitate to, especially with the, with the convention center here, uh, with Clayton State being across the, across the street there, there's gonna be opportunities for Clayton State, you know, to have, you know, their, their events there. Um, I note that, I think they're in the, uh, Sunbelt Conference now, and it's gonna be opportunities for them to actually host. Um, you know, their conference is there, you're gonna come into town, and this, this is gonna be big for Clayton County, and it's gonna be a very unique hotel that, that pretty much, um, no one's seen before in, in the state, and I think, you know, with the views and everything that goes on with this hotel, this is gonna be a big aspect, um, to Clayton So what brings the entertainment together is this amphitheater. This is the, I would say this is the meat of the project, because, uh, this is a deal, a fifteen-thousand, twenty-thousand-seat cover amphitheater, um, similar to the one I did in Jacksonville, uh, brought out right outside of the Jaguar Stadium, um, called Daily Place. Uh, very unique, um, design, because it's covered, but it feels like you're inside, and, and it's also ventilated, so you don't have to worry about being hot, but it gives that feel, you can have views of other facilities, you know, other, other, other areas that's surrounding it, and, um, it's covered. So this is the aspect that, uh, we think is gonna make the Clayton County the entertainment, um, uh, county, um, here in Georgia, and in the Southeast. I think, you know, mainly because everybody who flies into Clayton County, or everybody who flies into the airport, steps foot in Clayton County. So our goal is to keep them here, and I think this is gonna keep them here, if you, if you look at the, the job creativity that it's gonna have, you know, with this complex alone, um, people is gonna bring in, each concert, you're looking at twenty-thousand people at least, so that's gonna boost up the economy in the area, that's gonna boost up jobs, because we really think this facility will a- at least bring twenty-thousand jobs, um, to this particular complex. So that's the, that's the goal here, and this is gonna be pretty much the, the meat and the money generator, um, for this complex. Uh, retail, retail is very important to us, because we, we as Roman United, you know, and, and we talk to Larry all the time, this is, um, a goal for us to bring in, you know, local, local people here, uh, especially with retail and restaurants. Um, we wanna, we wanna give them the opportunity, um, there in this space, and then also, you know, I think Clayton County definitely needs the aspect of, of the shopping, you know, of the retail, um, of bringing in something that, that will change the, uh, perspective and everything around the community where people can enjoy coming and playing, um, you know, shopping, and never leaving a facility, you know? And, and if they wanna stay, they can, they can sleep in a hotel, you know? So, um, this is something that I think is very important for Clayton County, because we can also include some local presence in, inside of this place. Um, rooftop concept, so this is important because of the aspect, I don't think, um, I, I've been to pretty much every complex, the Battery, you know, the Avalon. We're gonna take advantage of the rooftop concept, because Clayton County has the best views. There's, there's nothing that, that I've seen, and I've been out with drones in these properties, you guys have the best views in the state. You get the, you get the city, um, uh, views with downtown, midtown, Buckhead, which you can see, and also you get the. And also you get the greenery to get nature, or you can see the, you can see the trees, you know, you can, you can see the real part of Georgia, and you al- you also can see the potential. And then of course you get the, the airplanes, and you can see that, that comes flying back and forth. Um, so you feel like you're, you're, you're in the city, and that's what you, that's what you feel like, and you feel like, you know, you, you're gonna, Clayton County's gonna be able to make a staple with this to say, hey, we have the most spectacular views, if you come here, you wouldn't wanna leave. And that's what, um, uh, we wanna do with the project. So thank you guys, uh, for the presentation, and thank you guys for, um, uh, you know, allowing us to present again. And like I said earlier, it's been, it's been two years for us, but I know it's been, you know, twenty-five, thirty years for you guys. Um, and, and we wanna make this project right, we wanna make, uh, uh, Clayton County, you know, the staple of, of Georgia, the staple of southeast as far as entertainment. And there's a lot of people, you know, that's not here that's behind this project, um, and, and everybody wants to see the same goal. And, and Joe can vouch for that, Joe is from Clayton County, he grew up here, and, you know, he knows that, you know, the change is, the change is coming, he's been waiting a long time for this opportunity as part of, yeah, uh, I'll have to see.
Please, please take the call, please.
Yeah, thank you all for this opportunity, my name is Joe Burns. Um, I tell people I'm a product of Clayton County, I attended elementary school at Terra Elementary, I met my wife there, uh, my wife is...
She wanted a teacher, was she?
No, she... Nah, she wasn't a teacher, but I met my wife there, I went to Marl Middle, and, and my wife is, uh, uh, got three grad degrees from Harvard, very brilliant lady, she graduated from Jonesboro High School. I played Lily football right here, J, uh, J triple A, what we used to call it, uh, Officer Greg Dickens was my coach back then. And I, uh, took sports, sports gave me an opportunity, I attended Georgia Tech, I became a Hall of Famer there, went and played professional with the Buffalo Bills, and my whole aspiration was to come back here and, and create something amazing. As a kid, running down Marl Industrial Boulevard, and going to South Lake Mall every chance we get, going to the Dollar Movie Theater on Friday nights as a kid, that was our highlight, and then we used to have so much fun here. And just in having the opportunity to be, have a small part, and bringing that energy back to Clayton County, has really been like fulfilling, uh, for our team. So we really appreciate this opportunity, we're humbled to have an opportunity to serve you all, and to help create a vision that, you know, we all dream and, and, and really wanna see. So again, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. So questions, any questions from board members? Commissioner Hammer.
Do you know what hotel, the name of the hotel?
Name brand.
Name brand, not, not, not yet, so we're, so we're in that process, so we'll, so we're gonna be doing our feasibility study, which we're in the pre-development phase right now, um, so we jumped right into the feasibility study, and then we're gonna, we put out about four RFPs in September for this project, and that's for the, you know, the traffic study, the site plan, um, which we have pretty dynamic right here. Um, and then environmental, um, in which, uh, we have Roberto here, who's big in, in environmental, um, with Vista. Um, so we jumped right into that phase, and then we, and then we, um, figured, but we have a lot of inquiries for the hotel, of course, because everybody is going crazy over this project. So, um, we break that down into, you know, basically, the fit, the look, and the partnership. Um, so sooner than later, we will be signing the joint venture with the hotel, but it will be, you know, after, after we kind of do all of the pre-development stuff here.
Okay, now, is a hotel and a living facility, or one or the other, or both?
Both, so yep, so we'll have residential, um, towers along with, um, uh, condos along with, um, hotels, yep.
Okay, uh, are you gonna do it in phases, or are you gonna do the whole thing at one time?
So we'll do it, we'll do it in phases, uh, what we look at, of course, we're gonna be building the Development Authority Headquarters, um, office, and then we look at the, the money generating phases, so we jump right into the, we jump right into the residence, um, hotel, and the amphitheater will be the first phase, then everything else will come right after of it. So, um, so the main thing is, if you're looking at the aspect of a project like this, if you're having a concert, you gotta have somewhere for somebody to stay. Um, all of the, all of the condos can be pre-sold, so those will be built, designed, um, basically, we, we call it design build, 'cause they'll be designed and built basically before it gets put up, so people can buy them, um, they'll see the look and everything. So those are the money generating aspects, so we'll kind of circle those three into one phase, and then, um, along with the Development Authority, um, building.
Okay, do you have a completion date in mind for the entire, uh, project?
Yeah, so we're looking at, we're looking at at least a, a two and a half, three-year process, um, and just because when we're going into the design phase here, um, the preliminary stuff will take about, you know, six months, so we wanna make sure all of that is right. Um, we'll start groundbreaking here very soon, as we got everything lined up for that. Um, so, you know, with the approval of everything, you know, we'll, we can basically start our groundbreaking and pre-development stuff, um, in September. So that, that'll go along with the timeframe that I said, now within the two and a half, uh, three years.
Okay, and maybe it's just me, but what's the podium parking?
Um, that's, that's basically floating parking, so basically, um, parking deck. So you're looking at the parking, you're looking at parking decks, um, which takes a lot, um, less space. So if you're looking at, you know, the floating parking, the podium parking, it's the parking deck that will be, if you're looking at a, at a condo, you'll have, um, parking below it, so, so, and then you can have a part, a separate parking deck that goes up around the side, you know? So that's the, you know, that's an aspect, not much of a flat parking spaces, because, uh, we wanna utilize as much space and as much parking as possible.
Now, the guy that's not here, what's his title, what?
He's the, he's the architect on the project, he's actually in Dubai right now.
I was just gonna say, because I saw that building, I'm thinking, that looks just like a building out of Dubai.
Yep, and we, we do a lot of work there, but he's, um, he's the, he's the top architect in, in Dubai, um, and you guys know, they can go...
Their building, yes, yes.
So, um, you guys will get a very unique design with this project, that's gonna set you apart. And what we look at is, this is the staple for everything else that has to come to Clayton County. And, um, and I think you guys should accept anything less for what you deserve, you know, what you, and what you, um, for the last twenty-five or thirty years. So we do this project right, um, and then everything else, I think, will come along with it as far as the look and feel for Clayton County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Other than, um, the building that's gonna be dedicated to us, considering this is in the City of Marl, correct? Is this in the City of Marl, City of...
I thought it was Lake City.
Lake City in Marl.
Thank you, Lake City Marl. Uh, what is, what are you all expecting from our board, what are you asking, what is to ask?
Um... Let me correct one thing, Commissioner Warner, that is not the Development Authority Office, that is the incubator.
Incubator, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's not my office, uh...
'Cause when he put it up on there, he's...
I know, even if they wore me into the building. So, let's, let's get it built, we'll get it built, we're trying to key it over to Mrs. Stanford, and who, who goes in that building, it'll be a county decision. Um, and, um, and you asked about the podium parking, if, we do have some examples in the slides that could be pointed out. It's, it's just not the open parking deck, can you roll back a couple of slides? And give this handbrake a, a, a look at what that is, and it's kind of, it's a very unique way of hiding parking decks, and they can look like, uh, just part of the development, but to go back to one more. It's up right there, it's, 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 the slide in the upper, uh, right-hand corner there, where you can actually go to a parking deck and put some, with facing on it, and it make it look like part of the facility. And this is just an example of how we'll do it. If you notice here, the greenery, you can notice we looked at different designs, where you can actually take the, uh, the building, and be creative how the floors turn, to actually put more greenery back. We're gonna take down a lot of trees, and one of the projects to be environmentally friendly, so we can have a lot of, um, gardening and greenery on each floor, and you can, you can twi- turn the floor in different ways, so everybody can get a good view and a southern facing, which just help everything grow. Also with those floors, you then, you can capture your rainwater and, and runoff water to recycle it, so you're releasing less water into the environment, which will help us, um, you understand, with clear water, actually have to build these large retention ponds.
Let me simulate to the Georgia Tech building there?
Yes, yes.
That's, um, fully resourceful and is, um, sustainable within itself?
Right, that's correct, these will all be energy efficient and, and sustainable. And just like, we actually visited some sites in Atlanta to go look at those facilities, whether retention ponds are really lakes, ponds where lily patch, they're real beautiful, don't look like retention ponds, but they're capturing the water, releasing it, and had a much, uh, the coefficient of runoff is much slower, less impact on the community, plus they're recycling a lot of water, which means that's less water you got to buy from Clayton County Water Authority. So all that is going into the design, and what we're asking of the BLC is, we, like I said, we're pulling together the legal documents to make this wonderful project happen, and we'd like for you all to take it eventually next board meeting, to approve those documents for the land, and, and actually transfer the money over, so we can get this project built for the county.
Can you be specific for us, though, to transfer the money over, you're talking about for the incubator?
For the incubator, that's all we're...
That's what we wanna be specific on that, got it, thank you.
And that money's already been collected.
I'm, I'm clear on that, I just want the community to hear that, and I believe I saw the mayor out in the audience.
Yes, Mayor Dotson is here.
We didn't recognize him, can you scoot over a little bit for me, sir? Mayor Dotson.
Oh, there he is, okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, Mayor Dotson and, and their local, but they're part of that executive board, they meet with us every other week, uh, and where we discuss the project in depth and detail, and plus this team is gonna go visit Marl, City of Marl, and the City of Lake City, to make sure they all get the same information.
Yeah.
If there's anything you want us to do on behalf of the community to go make a presentation...
I do.
We'll do the same thing.
I think that is...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, um, I think it's imperative for us, as we see these plans coming before us, that we make sure that we look at the connectivity of it.
Okay.
Um, I believe that we have great plans, great vision, that goes before the board. Um, I'm one of those, and I'm looking to see it executed, and I'm glad the question was asked, the timeframe, the timeline. Um, I, I wanna know the, the, you know, I know that you all can make it happen, and we're gonna turn all the funds just for the incubator, but at some point, I wanna be able to see, um, the solubility of the company, to make sure that we're gonna see this to fruition. 'Cause if I recall correctly, not, nothing against you all at all, but we've had a lot of projects presented to us as a board. There was once a movie theater that was, um, entertainment, where they could film, was presented to us, didn't come to fruition, didn't have an update on it. And it's not to recount all of that, but I think that there's, um, a space in there to where we gotta move beyond the concept and visuals to actual get, actually getting it done, and seeing that the company is soluble, and able to not just build an incubator, but build out the entire project, so that we can see that here in the county. The other piece is extremely important, that we don't make these decisions in isolation, even though this doesn't have as much to do with what we discussed earlier, but the bottom line is, if we got, we're looking at investing in money as a board into transportation, whether it's going near the airport, around the airport, and we're talking about using funding from other funding sources that would normally be used there, and I'm still trying to figure out where Martha got the ten million dollars from, but the point is, how are we gonna create connectivity? Because at the end of the day, we've got to make sure that we're creating not just a sustainable, um, amphitheater, but how are you gonna connect it to those that are coming here, that are getting off that airport and coming to that facility itself? I think there's great potential there, there's a lot of, um, groundwork there, but I believe that there's an opportunity for us to make sure that we build upon that layer, so that we can ensure the success of this project.
Well, if you look at this overhead view here, where that site is located, right across the street, you got Clayton State University, project, and then we had eight thousand students there. And so, we got eight thousand customers ready to come over, enjoy all the facilities there, no doubt about it with the amphitheater, there will be a marketing team actually booking apps to go in there. So that's part of connectivity and the advertising that will be done across Clayton County, to let everybody know what's going on here. Plus Clayton State is part of Peachville Conference, I made a mistake there, and, and, and the good news there is, this is now to be ground zero for the Peachville Conference, where they now have...
That's perfect.
Class A facilities versus some of the smaller towns some of these schools come from. So we got that there because of the airport, they can fly right in, get off the airplane, go do what they need to do at Clayton State, and you got the hotels, the condos, and what I found so exciting about the project, uh, is talking to the recruiters from our job fairs. So we got these corporations moving into Fort Gilbert and places like that, they're now going to downtown Atlanta. That's where they, they buying their corporate condos, they're going to their hotels, and they sit in parking, and that parking lot calls into the, uh, seventy-five, eighty-five connector for an hour.
I'm totally familiar with that, 'cause the fountain blew, that's what they were built upon, the same concept, but...
So we have that connectivity, and one thing with John, if you notice, there will be a trail on the back of that property, it would tie into the Clayton State Trail, the City of Marl took that trail and took it all the way back to Reynolds Nature Center.
Mm-hmm.
So that whole area will be connected via trails, that will be, and the county does a great job at promoting the trail system, Marl, the same thing. So it, it's gonna be well-connected, well-advertized, well-supported, and put out there for the world to enjoy and come to Clayton County. And we're open to any suggestions or ideas that anybody may have, who don't, who think we're missing something.
Just don't bank on those, all the college students, they don't have that kind of money all the time now, I'm just saying. We gotta pull in those businesses, as you stated, but no, this is great concept.
Yeah, we're gonna do all that, um, we do know they, they have enough money to go to downtown Atlanta, we know that, but so we'll get some of that diverted there. To put it in context, guys, you know, Lenox Square is about five million square feet of commercial and retail. This project is two point nine million square feet, so it'll be one of the largest newer retail commercial centers being built in metro Atlanta. I think that, that's pretty attractive, pretty huge, and something we all need to be very, very proud of. So we're asking you all to take a good, hard, long look at the documentation, the legal team has been, their attorney, Freeman Madison Gary, and Chuck Reed with the county, and they have gone back and forth and redlined it, and redlined it, um, I think some of the ink is about to wear off of it, but we're getting a good package together to make sure the county interest and the citizen interest and the company's interest are all protected. So that's, that's gonna be the ask.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Davis, you have anything?
I do, um, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to know, are these the architectural renderings that will be going there, or are these just graphics that you're examples?
Yeah, these are, these are renderings that we...
Talk into the mic, please.
I'm sorry, these are renderings that we put together for this particular project, as, as it says, preliminary, um, the reason why it says preliminary, as we go through the feasibility study and everything, and the complete design, you guys will get the real design, as you stated, we'll be, you guys will see everything from, from point A to point Z. So this is the preliminary, um, design phase, and we're jumping right into the, into the original design, uh, once we get you guys, uh, final signature and approval, and then we, we jump right into it. So it'll be the aspect of you guys seeing it throughout the whole entire process, so, um, your feedback and, and everything will be very important to it.
So we, we, you've not obtained any permits or anything as of yet?
Not, not as of yet.
Okay, um, got the timeframe, I wanted to know, as far as planning, how many Class A office spaces are you planning for?
Uh, we're, we're going for at least, uh, two Class A office spaces, um, as far as the buildings. So that's a, that's a, that's a building for a Class A office.
Is that the total of...
That, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, there's no designated total right now.
Okay.
Um, we have to really look at the, the, the economics of it, and make sure, you know, everything ties into the building the right way. Um, but our goal is to have at least two buildings there, um, because, like Larry said, on, on the corporate side of things, we wanna bring, you know, that attraction of those type of, uh, uh, companies inside of this, and, and, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, you know, workplace type of facility.
All right, and what about residential units?
Uh, we're, so it's gonna be two towers of residential units, fifteen stories, if you're looking at the aspects of, uh, um, two to three-bedroom, um, condos, so I would say around two fifty is what we're looking at, so two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Um, and that's the, and that's right now, before we do the feasibility study, and, as I say, this is preliminary, so a lot of things can change throughout the process.
Okay, okay, and the last one is, how involved have the cities and municipalities been at seeing what's gonna go over there? Um, granted, this is Clayton County, but also the cities and municipalities have invested interest in this, and how much communication is being done to make sure they are not being blindsided, surprised, or anything else?
There is no blind siding going on, or surprises, 'cause mayor, both mayors and their economic development directors are on the executive team, and they've been on every call we have had from the very inception, and, and they will go from this meeting and go to each city with this same presentation, and they will see what you're seeing, and that's one thing we did, Commissioner Davis made sure there was no blind siding, or people left out of the loop, and a lack of information, um, 'cause as y'all know, we do have a, the Dollar General store over there, that's a, that's a concern, but we'll work with Dollar General as well, they have an upscale commercial DGX brand that'll fit very well in this development. They have an upscale commercial DGX brand that'll fit very well in this development. So, um, there's a dry cleaner there on the corner, they have a contract there. So we've been working and making sure that Lake City is part of that conversation. So we have done everything we could and by including both mayors and both economic development directors of the cities. And like I say, we are open to go visit and do all the business we have to do, but we want to come here first and let y'all see this first. And then, um, well, the Development Authority Board hasn't seen it yet either, so we gotta go show it to them as well. So, but we want to start with it, for the commissioners first.
And so anticipated groundbreaking is, I know we talked about two and a half, three years earlier, but anticipated groundbreaking. Permits obtained, we gotta shovel in the ground.
September, so we're looking at a, uh, September ceremony for the groundbreaking. Like I said, it's been, it's been two years for this pre-development process, so we're ready to rock and roll right now.
So September as in next month?
Yeah, next month, yeah, next month, September, yeah.
And that's all it matters to.
Provide, we got our eyes across our t's and approve what we need to do.
Thank you.
Great, cause like you said, it's been a long time. Cause I remember that, that land on that property was all cut down and nice and pretty, now we got a forest over there.
Right.
So we definitely need to get some, uh, dirt turning and, um-
We got to prove that here.
Okay. The, uh, project is, uh, definitely has, has me excited anyway. Uh, just wanna make sure that we meet our expectations in terms of what you're presenting to us. Uh, I think we all share that, cause we've had hits and misses off and on for many years. So this needs to definitely come to fruition. I think it's something that will really set us apart from our, uh, other metro Atlanta, uh, counties. So we're, we're looking forward to working with you, well, um, again, we'll get the cart before the horse. But as long as this board approves, approves, uh, everything that needs to be approved, then let's, uh, let's get it going.
Yeah, that's what we're most excited about.
I like, I'm sorry, I would like to talk a little bit more offline about Mr. Akon City and how he's expanded.
Okay.
As well, to see what the next phases are, um, to see if we can go ahead and get, um, moving on that. And tell him, I'm still waiting for him to come back and play a mean deck of cards, you know, uh, just one little thing. Uh, it takes me back to the days of Miss Andrews and I never forget, I don't know why, just had that thought. We were in between sets and Akon, it was my partner. I was over there nervous, I was like, Lord, let me win this game. But it'll be, but I just think that things come full circle in life. And I would love to see this happen because, um, it would be good to see him come back to Atlanta and make those levels of investments. Because since that first time that he got going, um, you know, he focused his attention in Africa, so it'd be good to have this happen. But again, I just wanna see it come to fruition.
Yes, yes, I mean, that's what we're here for, that's what we're here for.
So gentlemen, I appreciate the presentation, very insightful. And as Commissioner Davis, uh, has stated and you verified that everybody is being kept in the loop. So let's make sure that we're able to continue to be open and, and meet with our, our, uh, city counterparts. Make sure that they're up to date on everything as well. So thank you and I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Benson, I think you next up. Is that you, the work, work source?
Workforce, yes, sir. I have the great pleasure of introducing a member of my staff. Um, had a great joy of hiring this young lady. Uh, product of Clayton County, University of Georgia and Georgia Tech. And she does a great job and keep, I have all these wild ideas and she made, makes sense out of them. So we'll introduce Sydney Elise Vergette and she'll walk you through the workforce development presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, um, and COO, constituents and, and staff. I am, excuse me, my name is Sydney Elise Vergette. And I am the Business Development Manager at the Development Authority. And I am so thrilled to be here today to discuss the great things that the Development Authority is doing in workforce development. So we, in my presentation, I will be talking about three main things. I'll start by discussing and reviewing data of where our current workforce climate is as of today. Then I will talk about some of the Development Authority's wonderful initiatives to address these workforce challenges. And then finally, I will talk about the future of workforce development in this county. Essentially, I'll be answering three questions. Where are we now? What are we doing and where are we going? So let's start with where are we now? So let's, uh, we'll start with our unemployment rate. The unemployment rate is a great gauge in understanding the joblessness in our community. So our unemployment rate as of June twenty twenty-one was seven point four percent compared to in May, six point six percent. So you see, there has been a point eight percent increase in our unemployment rate. But what exactly is going on here? Well, let's take a look at the labor data. So our labor force in May was a total of a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one. And then our labor force actually increased in June to be a hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six. And approximately one thousand, two hundred and ninety-six, uh, individuals in that, that were entered into our labor force were unemployed. So that, those one thousand, two hundred and ninety-six people are counting for that point eight percent increase that you see here. But let's talk about potential drivers, okay? This is happening, but why, where are these new people coming from? Well, we have high school and college graduates. As we all know, May is the time for graduation. And students are leaving their educational institutions and going into the labor force. Another driver is pandemic anxiety. And looking at the data and analyzing it, we felt like it would be negligent not to acknowledge how the pandemic is affecting workers' behaviors. So you have a lot of workers who are leaving the workforce or staying out of actually going back into it because of the fear of exposing their family to COVID nineteen. And those unemployed victims provide that support, so they feel that risk is not needed. So that's also what's accounting for that point eight percent. And finally, we have transplants from other counties. Um, we know that quality of life is increasing and rents are increasing. And Clayton County is one of the most affordable counties in the metro Atlanta. So you have these individuals who are leaving their homes in surrounding counties and coming here. And they may be coming here without a job. So all of these are potential drivers of that point eight percent that you're seeing. However, when we look at unemployment rate, it's best to look at it over time. And as you can see, if we look at our unemployment rate from January of this year, there has been a downward trend overall despite this blimp in June. In fact, if we look at our unemployment rate from June twenty twenty-one to June, or, uh, looking at June twenty twenty, we see that it's also decreased significantly. So we definitely are making strides in lowering our unemployment rate overall. All right? So now that we understand our unemployment rate, let's review some data, as I'm sure you guys are all aware of this information. But let's start focusing on that unemployed population. Who are they? Well, the one thing that we know about our unemployed population is that they're between the ages of twenty-five and thirty-four. And this is great data because this data is actually from May twenty twenty-one. And we see that in our chart, there is kind of this step-like display. So we have our twenty-five to thirty-four year olds, then it's thirty-five to, I believe it's forty-four year olds. Um, and it goes on and on. We really wanna focus on that twenty-five to thirty-four year old group because first, they're younger. They're gonna be in the labor force for a much longer time than these other individuals. And they are the source of the unemployment in these other groups. So by focusing on them, we can really tackle that overall unemployment and then hit all of the rest of the age brackets. So another thing that we know about this unemployed population is that as far as educational attainment, their highest credential is a high school diploma or less. So approximately forty-eight percent of individuals in, uh, our community have, um, a high school diploma or less. So if we're using education as a criteria for the skill level, we could say that these individuals are both skilled and we would need to address this. And then finally, we know where they live. They live in the city of Riverdale and in parts of Jonesboro and Forest Park. So here, we were able to ascertain this information by looking at poverty levels. So we looked at the poverty levels and the concentration of these poverty levels in Clayton County. And we see in this kind of square area, this is where they're, they're at. Uh, okay, this is where they're at. And here, this just is a closer look of the census tracts of where these individuals are. So this is great information for us, cause then we can be strategic about putting training organizations, support systems in these areas to help our unemployed population. So now when we understand who they are, let's kind of talk about a couple other workforce challenges holistically in Clayton County. So we have three main challenges. Low-skilled population, a scattered workforce system, and a low industry diversity. At, go ahead, myself. As we, uh, discussed before, we have a low-skilled population. Again, forty-eight percent have a high school diploma or less, so we're really gonna have to target this group in upskilling their, uh, different skills in order to obtain higher, um, higher paying jobs. The next thing is we have a scattered workforce system. When we were for first, uh, brought on the opportunity to work on this, one thing that we found that we were excited about was like Clayton County has everything. We have so many great workforce systems here in the county. However, they're all over the place, no one knows where they are and they're not getting a lot of support. So we're gonna have to figure out how do we centralize all of these workforce organizations, provide them with the support that they need so they can be effective in serving our community. And finally, our, uh, challenge is low industry diversity. Uh, for those who don't know, low industry diversity or industry diversity in general is looking at the distribution of industries, different types of industries in Clayton County. Now, Clayton County primarily has logistics industry, industries, uh, specifically thirty-seven point nine percent. And this is actually great, cause logistics is a very important industry. Um, it's critical in our global market. However, the issue is that because logistics is so important, it is one of the hardest hit industries when you have catastrophes like a pandemic or a catastrophic weather event. So if we're thinking about the long-term sustainability of our economy, we really want to work on diversifying our different industries. And if we're looking here, just comparing ourselves to our peers, we have about one point eight percent of industry diversities versus, let's say Douglas County, who's similar with, um, their large, uh, logistics hub, they have twenty-one point seven. So I included just some different types of industries that we could improve on and could provide within our county to work on. So for example, we have healthcare, which is one point six percent of industries in Clayton County. With the typical share is five percent. So ultimately, when we are working on upskilling our, uh, workforce, it will really help us to attract different types of industries here, cause then they'll have a labor force that can actually do these things. But this is more of a long-term thing that we'll, we'll need to work. All right. Now that we understand where we are, let's talk about what we are doing, what the Development Authority has been doing on workforce. So one of the great things that we've been doing at the Development Authority is hosting job fairs. We had our last job fair on June eighteenth and it was a tremendous success. We had forty different employers to attend and over a hundred and twenty job seekers. And, uh, after the job fair, what we did was we, uh, conducted a post-assessment survey to get feedback on both our employers and our job seekers. And our employers told us they were so excited to be able to come and interact with constituents and people who are actually looking for jobs. Cause as we all know, our businesses are hurting and they're looking for qualified talent. So they were very excited to have the chance to have those in-person interactions. And the job seekers were also enthusiastic. They were excited that there was a job fair in their community. There are a lot of job fairs that are happening, but they're in Atlanta, there are in, you know, Fulton, they're all over the place. But they're not, you know, in Clayton, they're, they're not as close as one with one. So there are jobs that are here, there's a, a job fair that's here and there are, uh, jobs that they can take, um, take a part of in our local community. So it's, it's been fantastic. In fact, we are going to have another job fair next Friday, so please share with everyone and attend if you need a, a job. Another thing that we've been doing is establishing workforce partnerships. So we've established partnerships with our Clayton County Public Schools, with WorkSource Georgia, as well as with our training organizations both inside and around Clayton County. So specifically, our partnership with the Clayton County Public Schools is something that we're very excited about. We partnered with an organization to help our students get skills and certifications in an in-demand career. And specifically, we're targeting students who, uh, may not see college as an option or who want to go directly into the workforce. So this partnership will allow us to create a talent-to-career pipeline and funnel those students into successful and fulfilling careers. So we're really excited about this and you'll hear more of the details, um, a little later. Another important partnership that we've established is with WorkSource Georgia. Now, WorkSource Georgia is the statewide branding of workforce development in, uh, Georgia. What happens is that, uh, the federal, um, government gives funds to, um, our state of Georgia, uh, WorkSource Georgia called REO funds, and then they funnel it to local workforce development boards. The workforce development board that we're underneath is the Atlanta Regional, uh, Commission. And in fact, uh, our chairman here, he was actually, um, is the chief official, chief-
Elected official.
Elected local official of the ARC. So we're so happy that he is on that board representing Clayton County. Um, but, so, um, we have a career center that's here in Clayton County that actually receives those REO funds and distributes them to, um, our residents. And what we did is we wanted to talk with them because a lot of people know about this awesome resource center. You know, individuals can come here and get career advice, they can get money for training and for education. And, um, they can come here and look for a job and do resumes. So this is an amazing place and we've been working with these partners to ensure that this place is being utilized, that no money is left on the table and our community is being served. We've also been working with them to create other programs that will help to assist our residents in, um, their job serves. So this has been a wonderful partnership. And finally, we've been working on, uh, uh, creating relationships with training organizations within our community, um, as well as attracting other training organizations to come in. Again, we're working on upskilling our residents so they are able to get more poly, high-quality jobs and have long-term careers. Okay, so these are upskilling our residents. And then finally, one of the last things that we've done or, you know, are doing and implemented, is our workforce resource guide. So as I said before, we had a scattered workforce system. And with understanding all the different, uh, workforce development centers and, uh, training organizations that were present, we decided to go ahead, give them a call, see if they were still open, find out the information of what exactly they do and put all of this wonderful information into a guide for our residents. So when they're looking for, hey, I'm looking for vocational training, what are all the vocational training organizations in Clayton County and surrounding Clayton County? That information is in there. So it's, it's been really wonderful, we've been sharing that with our residents. Okay? So now that we've talked about where we are, uh, what we're doing, let's talk about where we are going. So when we first started working on workforce development, uh, one thing that we did is we dove into the research and said, okay, what, uh, are the foundations of a good workforce development system? So here are some of the things we found. We found that, uh, a foundation of a good workforce system is understanding your existing resources and labor market. It's engaging and developing relationships with local stakeholders. It's tapping into existing funding sources and it's creating talent pipelines to connect people to careers. Now with this, with this information, we were like, okay, this is great, but let's look at case studies. What are people doing? You know, does the research- You know, does the research match with best practices? So we wanted to reach out to our metro layup partners. We talked to people at Fulton, Gwinnett, Douglas, Cobb, Cherokee, all these workforce partners to understand, people who've been, uh, or counties, rather, who've been doing this type of work for years, what are the best practices? And guess what we found? The best practices align with the research. So I'll do this wrong, okay, this is more information. Now, how do we stack, uh, how do we compare to other counties? You know, using this, uh, these best practices as a guideline, how do we compare? Now, mind you, this is six months ago when we were first looking at this. Okay? So all across the board, Clayton County really wasn't doing it. We weren't doing the things that we needed to create that workforce system. We weren't advertising our workforce services, we weren't that connected with our regional partner, established relationships, et cetera, et cetera. But that's not the end of the story. Where are we now? This is where we are now. We've changed two of those no's into yeses, and in fact, we're on the way to changing all of these two, both of those, all the no's into yeses. So this is a point of celebration. We are moving forward. We are doing so much in six months that people have been working on for ten, for decades. So this is exciting and great, but this is just the beginning. And with that, I present to you Clayton Works. Clayton Works is the workforce development brand of Clayton County. Our tagline, our tagline is "Where Talent Meets Employment." So when we were designing this logo and this branding, we were thinking about two things. We wanted the logo and the branding to evoke that Clayton as a county works, as well as that we put people to work. So that's what this is supposed to evoke. And our vision statement is ultimately, sorry, our, our vision statement is, with the collaboration of our employers, our vision is for all of our residents to be gainfully employed in the career of their choice and have access to the resources they need to succeed. Now, after we created this logo, the first thing that we did is said, okay, well, how does this work with our community? How will they receive this? And, uh, we, we, we put out this, uh, social media, and on our social media, what we had was information about, you know, employment opportunities, job trainings, all information that you would need and that would be important to you on your job search. And overwhelmingly, in these two months, uh, the community has responded positively. It's like, oh, this is great, I didn't know about this, oh my gosh, like this is really helpful. We've had, um, approximately a hundred and fifty followers, ten thousand views on all of our material, and seven hundred and fifty engagements. So that's likes, that's comments, that's retweets. So individuals are really enjoying this and excited to finally find, you know, a place where they can find all their, uh, job source resources. Another thing that we're excited to present, and we anticipate the launch of this is September first, is our Clayton Works website. Now, we understand that a lot of people are on, you know, social media, but not everybody is. And a website is the perfect way to provide even more information to our residents as well as more interact, in interactivity within, um, our website. So there are several great features that are gonna be on this website. There will be a map that will show all the different workforce resources in the county, and individuals can type in their location and find where is the one that's closest to them. There'd be a scrolling job listing of all the jobs in Clayton County that they can apply for, top, uh, the top five, you know, companies that are hiring, and all the information that they need for, uh, their job search. And in the future, of course, we would like to, uh, put success stories and any other additional information. So this is just the beginning with our website. So just so we're clear about the goal of Clayton Works, the goal is to develop an effective and well-connected workforce development ecosystem in Clayton County. We wanna work synergistically, we wanna work with our employers, we wanna connect our WorkSource partners, our job seekers, our educators and training providers. We all need to work together and come to the table to work on this problem of workforce development in an effective and efficient way. When we're all working together, we can make such a much bigger impact. So that's the goal of Clayton Works. Okay, that's the goal of Clayton Works. So what are our next steps? Our next steps are to continue to build and expand our website exposure and usage among employers and community. Uh, we plan to attract and support training facilities with funding and exposure. And we're also working on developing career-ready internship for students in eleventh and twelfth grade. So a little bit more about our career-ready internship. We're in the process of, um, working with an organization to, uh, help our students get, uh, the skills that they need. Because in our employer assessment survey, what we found that employers said was that these students or these candidates that are being hired, they don't understand how, um, they don't understand professionalism, they don't understand how to navigate a work, uh, workforce, a work environment, rather. So we're working with this organization to provide them internship and to provide them with those necessary skills to enter into the workforce, as well as connecting them with local businesses to intern, um, and to get that hands-on experience. So we're really excited about this and it's something that we're actively working on. And a quote that, um, is really prominent in my brain right now is Frederick Douglass. And he says that, um, "It's better to raise up a child than to fix or repair a broken adult." So we wanna start with our children, we wanna start with changing our culture and creating again that career-to-talent pipeline. And start it early. So let's all tie this all together. We had our challenges, or we have our challenges, I've brought to you some of our solutions, and all of this is wrapped up into the system of Clayton Works. This is how we're addressing this. However, for, in order for us to, to do this, I'm typing it wrong, but, however, in order to do this, we need your support, we need our educators, we need our training providers, we need our community, we need everybody working together on this system in order to ensure that our residents are gainfully employed in the career of their choice and have access to all of the resources they need to succeed. So thank you, and any questions?
Yes.
You said, uh, you said a, uh, whole lot there.
Yes.
And I can tell that you are very passionate about what you do. And we appreciate the effort and the time that you're putting into this because you are absolutely right, we need to find, uh, better paying jobs, we need to help those individuals, uh, obtain a higher level of education as well as job, uh, seek out those jobs, so I appreciate that. Other questions for?
I do.
Commissioner Franklin.
I'm gonna do something I've never done before after a presentation. Let me tell you why I did that. First of all, Mr. Vincent, I hope you're paying her well. I believe this board would have definitely benefited for you to continue to be a Clayton County employee. This county has a three-hundred-million-dollar budget. We often have presentations come before us, and there are a lot of holes within those presentations. Where we got to fill in and try to figure out ways to figure out the hole, what is the purpose? Where are we going, how are we gonna get there? What is the date of completion? You came in here today with not only recapping what the information that was most important for us to pick up, to go on, and be able to understand where we are and what you all are doing with Clayton Works. And the reason I stood up and clapped is because I really don't even have a question of what we're doing and where we're going. You spelled it out so eloquently, and with your energy alone, I believe that we're gonna get there in Clayton County. You personally are definitely a light to Clayton County. And Mr. Vincent, if he ever don't pay you enough, then Lord knows, we gotta find a place for you, young lady. So this is an amazing presentation, I'm excited to get to work, I'm excited to be a part of going where we need to go. The only thing I do have to add, and we've talked about this, Larry, is making sure that we add the other piece too, to making sure that the school system understands that the reason we don't have a lot of students with a college degree in Clayton County is because affordability. Perfect example of that, my daughter just graduated from Stillwell, she's going, I'm taking her to college this weekend. I was excited, I'm like, you got the Zell Miller Scholarship, until I looked at the line item of what it gives us, and I was like, oh, really? That's all we get extra? And my daughter made this comment at me, she said, "Mama Georgia don't believe in education in their kids." Well, we've got to make sure that we spend that data on his head and that thought process on the head. And what I mean by that, let's take it a step further, let's get these partners, the ones that are looking for kids to get into these spaces, to give funding, to give scholarships, so that they can be in those technical training areas, and I know you're gonna do that. The other point quickly that I wanna make is we gotta make sure that we continue the communication with the educational system and help them to understand where AP classes sound good, they look good for our population based upon what you shared with us today, and affordability of school, getting more kids to go to school. If we get kids to start work early and get used to being in an environment, a work environment, where they can get those soft skills, where they can begin to understand what the level of professionalism is, but also continue to be daring and be able to press beyond mediocrity, then we're gonna see greater success. But also, we've got to make sure that we help the school system understand, and Dr. Beasley knows how I feel about this, is that we've got to have more courses that are gonna allow our students to get a college credit, not AP, but a actual college credit. So then when they graduate, for instance, when I looked at what my daughter got, she could have been going into college with two years completed. Now, that gives them a head start, and actually, they can even apply. At most four-year universities, they can apply for what's called an associate's degree. They don't advertise it, and that way, our numbers go up instantly, instantaneously. So more so than a question, I just have that piece to add, and you have given me the jolt of energy I needed today. Thank you.
Also thank the Board of Commissioners for the funding we requested through the rescue plan ad. That money we're gonna use to actually put, um, some nonprofit places to help our kids as they come right out of high school, to be trained to go to work. And that money's gonna go a long ways to address some of the, the issues that we have discovered, um, like forty percent of our workforce is female. Think about that, and then you dig down a little further, how many of those single female head of house will have children?
Yeah, it would be me.
It's just not education, it's childcare, it's healthcare, we, we, um, um, the whole racial equity thing is really showing up here in Clayton County.
Definitely.
And we are reaping the benefits of all the years of people pushing that on us. And it's up to us to change that, and we'll work with our school system and Clayton State to address how we get more kids into college. There's like a forty-four percent dropout rate in college, I don't know if y'all do that, so.
Yeah, this is for finance, yeah.
So thank you all.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I wasn't finished. One other quick, one quick thing that you brought up, something that's really good, is not only do you have this data, but you talked about the single mothers, childcare. That's gonna allow us to really make good use of our comprehensive plan, land use plans, our transit oriented developments, so that we can begin to know where, um, we can see more density and be able to serve our population in a really good way. And that's gonna allow for you all to be able to market our county to those, um, businesses that are looking for somebody that can get to work on time and not held up because they have no place to take their child. So you can create those environments to where they're, they're a sustainable, eco-sustainable, uh, environment, which deals with what you stated, the socio, the gap in socio-economics within our community. I am excited about this, and I'm on board, whatever I need to do to help to push it forward, I will.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
Yeah, just make sure everybody's good. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the presentation again, very insightful. All right, next up, Employee of the Quarter, Promoting Financial Wellness.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Angela Wood, I'm the Assistant HR Manager in Business Administration. Uh, earlier today, Director Ambles emailed you all your work session packets. If you all don't have it, I do have copies if you need them.
It's not on PowerPoint?
No, it's not. Did you write them?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's not on PowerPoint, can we get someone to send it over? Because how will the community be able to see what we're doing? Just a quick question.
I can email it, I haven't emailed it.
Well, you should have.
We're talking about for the community.
Right.
Well, we can put it on our website, let's go ahead and proceed on what we have right now. Yeah, she's talking about for the community, but since it wasn't done, we'll have to show it another way. So please proceed.
Thank you. On behalf of Clayton County employees, Human Resources presents the following items for your review. We actually have a total of three items. Um, the first one would be the Additional Enhanced Life Benefit for Public Safety Law Enforcement. The enhanced additional life insurance benefit would be a standalone product. Employees will be automatically enrolled in the additional benefit and do not have to participate in the basic life and AD&amp;D benefit to receive the additional benefits. HR is proposing a no-cost-share model for the additional benefit. Item two is the Be Safe, Be Well Wellness Program, Employees of the Quarter. The purpose of this, um, of the Employees of the Quarter is to promote financial and intellectual wellness among the employees of Clayton County. Clayton County's Be Safe, Be Well Wellness Program is administered with a focus on the seven dimensions of wellness. The Employees of the Quarter program will provide an opportunity to recognize and review employees who have engaged in extraordinary work and service that is well beyond expectations of executing work. Funding is available in Human Resources, Human Resources Wellness Budget. The Employee of the Quarter is attached for your review in the packet that was provided by Director Ambles. And last but not least, we have the Be Safe, Be Well Wellness Program Wellness Coordinator. The employee will be responsible for all administrative and programming tasks for the Be Well, Be Safe Wellness Program. The position will be advertised as a temporary position with an initial duration of three years. There is no cost to the county, funding for the compensation for this temporary position is available in Human Resources Wellness Budget. And also, um, like Chairman wanted the PowerPoint, Director Ambles did state, Ambles did state that, um, everything will be presented during the September seventh regular board meeting.
Any questions?
No, well, it was not a question, just for clarification, because I did read this this afternoon. And this is at no cost to our law enforcement and others, right?
For law enforcement and public safety.
Right, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's like an automatic addition?
It is.
Okay. There's something else to the thing, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, additional position for the Wellness Coordinator. You already covered it?
Yeah.
Okay, did you cover the, uh, public safety? Oh, so I guess we had the end of the, I guess I had to teach me to have to go to bathroom.
Can we have a point of privilege real quick?
Or maybe I should go more often, one or the other. Well, thank you for the presentation and the update on that. Uh, all right, well, there being no other business?
Yes, there is, if we don't mind.
What other business do we have, ma'am?
Um, yes, the other business that we have is that I would like for our board to recognize that the oldest and the most longest-serving commissioner has passed away, Mr. Richard English. Many of us know him or knew him. I know that Commissioner Hamburg knew he and his wife, he and his wife Sherry. I don't think that he was just the, the commissioner himself, his wife served too, she was at every meeting. And, um, his funeral was today, and I will be heading down there to present a, uh, a notice from our county, um, to that family, and his name was, um, Commissioner Richard English. And, uh, he was down in the LaGrange area. So I would just like for us to remember him, um, and, uh, remember the life because to be in service is not easy, and especially during the times that he came in. And I think it's important for us to recognize that he was one of the first African-Americans to serve as commissioner. And once again, the longest sitting commissioner in all of the state of Georgia. The longest sitting commissioner in all of the state of Georgia. God rest his soul.
Okay, thank you for that announcement. Now, is there any other business announcements? Everybody good? All right, well, we stand adjourned then.